Notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas, is being held. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. We have called the meeting to order. We would ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flag. Gary?
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity together this morning for the Commissioners Court in here in Grimes County. Lord, bring your wisdom into this room that we may pass it on and give the members of our court the opportunity to make the right decisions for the county. It's in your sons' and Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? If the minutes will reflect that Commissioner Dobieinsky is not here today. He called me this morning, said he had been given a gift by Mother Nature and did not want to share it with the rest of us. And I was appreciative of that. That will bring us to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments. Anyone have any public comments they'd like to share or make? We'd ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, and if you would, limit your comments to no more than two minutes.
If there are no comments from the floor, I'd like to look at announcements.
Certainly.
On tomorrow, from 10:00 to 12:00, we will be hosting an onsite workshop for those that may need to repair their homes who are over 62 years old. And also, it's for qualifying for home purchases. It's with the USDA Area Specialist Susan Thompson. She'll be onsite to help those that need home repair applications taken and walk you through the process.
And the location is?
Is at the Grimes County Annex in Navasota, Texas, from 10:00 to 12:00. Sipping Navasota Annex.
And Commissioner Precinct Three is providing lunch for those that attend afterward?
Well, I have some jelly beans.
Okay.
No lunch.
You're quick on your things.
That's why we cut off at 12:00.
Thank you very much. Are there any other?
And it's free.
Any other public comments? I'll make one on behalf of Plantersville Crawfish Festival. That's going to be this Saturday at Plantersville Town Hall, starting at 11:00, and goes till, I think the band stops at 8:00. So if you haven't ever done that, just go to the front, buy a wristband, and eat crawfish to your content. I think they've got over 6,500 pounds ordered, something like that. Oh, yes. Are there any other public comments?
What time was that?
11:00 till, but the band quits at 8:00. I just hope they dump the trash already on Sunday or Monday. Hearing, seeing no other comments, we will now move to Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Number Four. Consider and take action to approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. And Agenda Item Number Four, Approve Minutes of Previous Commissioners Court Meetings. Regular meeting on March 13, 2019, 9:00 a.m., public hearing on March 20, 2019, at 8:45 a.m., special meeting on March 20, 19, 9:00 a.m., regular meeting on March 27, 2019, 9:00 a.m., special meeting on April 3, 2019, 9:00 a.m., and special meeting on April 5, 2019, at 1:30 p.m. See attached minutes.
If there are no questions, I make the motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Three and Four.
Second. There is a motion before the court on Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Four by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Agenda Item Number Five, Bedeys Creek Soil and Water Conservation District, Number 428, Charlie Price. Is Mr. Price here? The request is to consider and take action to approve proclamation designating April 28, 2019, through May 5, 2019, as Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Grimes County and authorize the county judge as signatory. See attachment number five. I can read his proclamation in his absence. "In Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board 2019, Soil and Water Stewardship Week Proclamation. Whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with our daily sustenance, and whereas effective conservation practices have helped provide us a rich standard of living, and whereas our security depends upon healthy soil and clean water, and whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources, therefore, I do hereby proclaim April 28 through March 5, 2019, Soil and Water Stewardship Week. Life in the soil, dig deeper."
I move to approve the proclamation designating April 28 through May 5 as Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Grimes County and authorize county judge as signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Five by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Six, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant David Cook, considering to take action to approve annual planned maintenance agreement for the 600-kilowatt standby generator at the LEC with Cummins Southern Plains, Houston. See attachment number six. Lieutenant, good morning.
Good morning, Judge. This is, just asking for the course approval for the planned renewal of the annual planned maintenance by Cummins Southern Plains on the 600-kilowatt generator at the LEC. It's in line with previous years and prices also.
And this is one of two?
One of two.
One of two.
This is the larger 600 kilowatt.
Gotcha. Okay. We've had discussion on this previously a few times.
Yeah, the jail standby generator usually comes up in February, so we've already acted on this year.
Okay.
I guess it would be good if the two came together. Pretty much.
Then we'd only see seldom versus often.
True.
[laughter]
Judge, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the annual planned maintenance agreement for the 600-kilowatt standby generator at the LEC with Cummins Southern Plains in Houston.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Six by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lieutenant, let me sign this and give it to you. There you are, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Seven, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly, consider and approve the contract for reverse 911 services with HyperReach and authorize county judge as signatory. Mr. Lilly is not here. Do you want to speak in his behalf since you were there?
He's down in Mo.
Still? Okay. He's fascinated with the numbers, I'm sure.
Currently, we have a...
And you are, ma'am?
I'm Catley.
Thank you.
Grimes County 911 GIS Environmental. Currently, we were under contract with Everbridge and Nixle product. And we researched HyperReach. The judge, myself, Dave Lilly, last week spoke with their representative at a conference we were attending. HyperReach is, number one, cheaper by almost $1,000, a little over $1,000 a year. They offer a few more features than what our Everbridge product had offered us. They still offer 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365 care if we ever can't access our dashboard to send out notices. So, that being said, this is what Dave Lilly and I wanted to present to the court as changing from Nixle and Everbridge and going with HyperReach as our reverse 911 carrier.
Bottom line, annually, it's lower in price.
Yes.
And secondly, it offers more features that we could utilize.
Yes.
Do citizens have to sign up for the reverse 911?
Yes. There is a, at the moment, there's a link on our website where they can sign up. Once we implement HyperReach, that link will be changed, and then they'll be able to sign up through HyperReach.
And it is in the event of an emergency?
It's an event. It's an event of emergency. They'll also send out severe weather alerts.
Like the...
Hurricane, tornado. Hurricane, tornado, severe weather. They'll automatically send those out when they get those from the Weather Service. It also has a feature called iPause. iPause, if we were to send out, say, an alert for shelter-in-place for the north end of the county, anybody driving through the north end of the county, it would, that's within reach of the cell towers there, would get that, would get that alert automatically, just if they were just driving for it.
That's pretty smart.
So if you have people coming and staying, say, for a couple months with the Renaissance Festival, and we have flooding, they would be able to get those alerts through hitting those cell towers.
So it doesn't matter if they sign up? It's just they'll get it on their phone if they're in the area?
They will get a recording.
Okay.
If you sign up, you get a text message, you get an email, and you sign up for more than one phone number to reach you.
And the reason why...
I'm sorry. And it also allows, say, if you have an elderly parent that lives in Grimes County, you live in Paris County, you can sign up for these alerts in Grimes County so that you know if something's going on.
Well, I was asking you to explain that because I was asked, do we have a county-wide horn or something that sounds when we're going to have a hurricane? And I told them that we have a feature on our website you can sign up for that will alert you if there's an emergency in the area.
Yes.
Judge, I don't, I did not get a copy of the contract, and my packet is to review.
I didn't get a copy of the contract to give you. They called me from the conference and said, just add this to the agenda because it was the last minute.
Yes, I think we sent it, we had, at the conference, we had HyperLink send it over to John C.'s office for review, and yesterday, I'm looking, she, y'all had suggested changes to the contract, and I got an email stating that she sent those back to y'all with the corrections.
Monday, and the two things that I pointed out were that, of significance, I pointed out several things, but it has an automatic renewal, and it allows HyperLink to determine the venue if there's to be a suit. I don't know why it wouldn't be Grimes County, and the court has usually had a practice of not wanting to have an automatic renewal. Kind of here where it's going, Commissioner Cox is going to need to see a copy of it, but do you know, because it didn't trigger in my brain that there was an existing agreement, do you know what the termination of that agreement required?
Our agreement is up May 1st.
Okay. Is there a notice required, or do you know?
I do not know.
Okay. I'll look at it. I'm sure that I have a copy of it.
I got a return from her with the corrections.
I did.
And a sense of urgency, Commissioner, on moving this quickly is because the contract with our current provider does terminate the end of this month, and we wanted to, I'm not trying to crash anything through without knowledge, but trying to make sure that we meet the dates and we don't end up without service.
Sounds like great service, and I just don't know anything about it because I hadn't had the opportunity to review the contract.
Well, I did call over and get a copy of it just for my own acknowledgement, and it's a one-year contract. It can be canceled with written notice from either party 30 days prior to termination, and it will renew thereafter with the same terms. Was that your office that sent the...
That was the note that I made, is that the court's not usually willing to do automatic renewal, and the note that Cat just handed me that I assume HyperReach made says, we can remove that line from the contract if you would like.
And the other notes that you made, I saw where they said they would remove some of those.
Right. And they said they'd change, instead of Asher, it says Asher. Asher reserves the right to determine the final venue. Changed that to Grimes County.
Okay.
So for any suit, we would reserve the right to determine the venue for any suit over this contract. They've made the changes that I requested, and I think they've clarified some questions that I had, but that's no replacement for Commissioner Cox, seeing with his own eyes. And I can certainly give this to him, and it won't take him long, but I don't know that he wants to do it today.
And just a side note, Robertson County that we know that was hit pretty hard with the tornadoes, they have HyperReach. They use HyperReach, and they have used it during this emergency.
And the current one, you said expires at the end of May? First of May?
Well, if I could make a suggestion, could, if you're contemplating taking some action today because the next meeting is after the first of May, could we ask Cat or somebody, or even Cory, to go over and get our copy of the old agreement so I can make sure that we can get out of that one, and then give a copy of this to Commissioner Cox and come back to it in a minute?
Whatever y'all, your suggestion is.
I'm really... I'm sorry.
Whatever your suggestion is.
Well, and being told that our next meeting is the first of May, I don't know if you guys want to wait until that date or not. I don't know if you want any laps. There may be a lapse. I'll shut up.
If it pleases the court, I can sit here and read this while we're in court, whatever you feel, or y'all can make a motion.
If we could get you a copy so that you could probably read it through the Roden Bridge Report or something.
No, I will definitely not read it through the Roden Bridge.
Here, here.
No, this is...
Oh, you have one for me?
Yeah. Here, this is a copy.
Is it the same?
It's the same one. Yeah.
Make you feel really good, didn't it?
Notes on the side.
Cat, do you have a way to get that over?
I can get it from Lisa. Yeah.
Okay. Let me just make sure there's not some provision they're going to say you're stuck in that thing.
We'll come back to Agenda Item Number Seven in just a bit. Of course, Cat's leaving us, so you get the floor on Number Eight. Agenda Item Number Eight, Grimes County Attorney John C. Foltz, consider and take action to review, modify, or terminate interlocal agreement with City of Iola regarding services for onsite sewer facilities. See attachment number eight.
Judge and Commissioners, you may recall that we addressed similar issues with the City of Bedeys not too long ago and entered an agreement whereby county would be paid for each complaint that environmental department dealt with. This is an agreement that's been, this agreement that you have in front of you is from 2012 with the City of Iola. There's no provision for payment. There have arisen some concerns as of late about whether or not the environmental department is able to handle the complaint in a way that has made Iola satisfied or happy. And so I put this on the agenda for the court to consider whether you intend to continue to operate this way, also whether you want to modify, to charge a fee. Pretty much, I think, for the court to be aware that this is ongoing, and as, well, as many of our interlocals have an annual review requirement, this does not. And so had you not seen this, you would not have known, I suspect, that this agreement continues to exist, and given that it's been in place for about seven years now, it may be time to consider whether it continues to be appropriate. And I know you know that we've got at least one remaining member of the environmental department that is here, so if you have questions for them, I think certainly Angelo would be happy to answer those questions, and I'll answer any that I can.
I'll ask the question, this agreement is different from all or most of our other interlocal agreements in that it does not have an annual review? Is that correct?
I don't recall because I don't have in front of me whether the Bedeys agreement has an annual review. It should. All of them should have an annual review. Because there's a lack of continuity with the court, obviously, there needs to be fresh set of eyes, I would think, no less than annually, to make sure that something that in agreement with another governmental entity continues to work to serve the people of both of those entities.
Right.
So this does not, and I suspect that one of Bedeys does, but you'll recall there's also the interlocals that were consistent across all small municipalities for 911, Roden Bridge, law enforcement. Those have been separate than this DR. I assume all of you are familiar with the DR designation where someone gets the approval of TCQ to serve as the designated representative for TCQ, then serves as a county employee but operating as a DR. They're authorized to do these inspections, and it's my understanding that Bedeys does not have a DR and that Iola does not have a DR. No one has gotten that designation, and so they've been relying upon the county's representative that has that designation.
And we have a $200 charge that we assess Bedeys in that agreement, but we do not have a charge that we assess on the Iola agreement. And this is signed two judges ago, so...
This is from 2012.
Right. July 10. Judge Shiflett signed.
I have a question, Mr. Foltz.
Yes, ma'am.
Was this based upon the facility, onsite facility, being built?
That was the expectation. But I think the termination date is either upon the notice or upon that facility being built. I didn't know, and this is just to tell you my awareness, I didn't know that it didn't get built. I thought that that was done because you'll recall, I know at least Commissioner Walker will recall, a handful of years ago or less, there was a flurry of concern that came out of Iola about whether there was effluent being run onto the ground or in the ditches. And so that issue arose through TCQ. We got a call from Tim Blackman with TCQ, the Waco office, who said, something has to be done, and Iola, I thought at that point, was committed to pursuing the wastewater treatment plant. Apparently, the funding didn't come through to obtain that, and so it hasn't happened to this point. This remains a question, you know, you always have to ask yourself when you're involved in a local, am I doing a tax burden shift where I'm putting tax burden on the entire county? So all the taxpayers of the county are funding a DR going to the City of Iola. They may have then people in Todd Mission to complain, how come the DR's over there doing that one, using my tax money to do that? You have to consider whether that continues to be appropriate. The fee that was charged to Bedeys was to alleviate or lay those concerns, I think, and to say, we're not using taxpayer dollars per se, we're getting reimbursed at least a portion of the dollars that are being used on county employee. I can't, I'm not going to say it's not, doesn't continue to be appropriate, but I can tell you that if there are conflicts between the entity and the county, then certainly the court needs to consider whether this continues to be an appropriate agreement.
Mr. Foltz, did you speak to, that the number of complaints have increased once again in the area?
That's my understanding, yes, that in fact, TCQ has received some complaints, and I think there's been a question of, a question by the city as to whether or not our folks are handling those complaints appropriately.
And there was also the possible accusation that the county initiated some of those complaints. Is that correct, Cat?
I messed up myself, our office and TCQ were mentioned.
But those were not generated by Grimes County DR. That was somebody anonymously called in, so...
Well, to my knowledge, and I hadn't been out there, hadn't been invited, and not sure I'd go if I got invited.
We'd be glad to invite you.
Hadn't been out there to tell you that this is rampant, but I understand it may be, and the way you address that in a municipality, and one of the reasons that you oftentimes live in a municipality is you hopeful that the municipality will provide certain basic services.
Sure.
And I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily time for the county to be out of this agreement, but it sure sounds like the city needs to continue to pursue, as I understand they have, but they may have run into some various roadblocks on funding, and I think Cat is aware of maybe now a new source, or maybe she recommended a source that may have also been a dead end, but somehow, some way, that City of Iola needs a wastewater treatment plant.
And that was the original reason for the incorporation of Iola, was to start the, similar to Bedeys, but they were a little late in getting a lot of the funding.
Okay.
So there's been a lot of roadblocks in getting those grants. It's my understanding that a lot of the grants that are issued are to existing water treatment plants that need to be fixed versus one that actually needs to be built, so they get less points to qualify for a lot of those grants.
There was a design phase that they did get some grant...
They've got money to get something designed, but as far as actually getting constructed, they won't have enough funds yet, so... But I, I think we probably should, if there's something between, you know, between Iola and Grimes County as far as what they want, maybe we need to enter a different type of interlocal agreement that they pursue similar to what we have with Bedeys, I believe, as far as they request it from us to come in and assist with any, I believe is the way it is, right? With Bedeys, they have to approach us and request help.
Yes.
Yes.
But these, if they represent this for TCQ, the complaints that came down, they filtered through our office because the cities do not have a DR and because we are, we have an interlocal agreement set up as DR for the entities.
Does that mean that if TCQ notifies you of a complaint, that you have an obligation to go out and do an investigation regardless of whether Iola pays you for it?
It depends on what our...
Interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement says.
Okay. I mean, we can, there's no, there's no requirement that you go investigate regardless of whether there's any reimbursement for our costs? There's not a requirement by TCQ?
Whenever we have something like this, TCQ always asks us what our interlocal agreement says.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But you were, there were concerns that since they were possibly being accused of being the ones generating it, that perhaps TCQ, TCEQ should be the one to investigate the complaints.
I don't know who the alternative would be, but if there are accusations being made of some, you know, we're creating the complaints, or we're conspiring with neighbors, or we're doing various things, if... doing various things, if this thing is generating a lot of blame or a lot of claims of deficiencies on our part, it's either time to walk away and let Iola find something else to do or try to resolve those things, but I think at least at a base level, require a fee. I mean, we've got people now that are chasing their tails, that are dealing with rumors and whatnot, that the county's not getting reimbursed for this. I mean, we've got people spending county, town, taxpayer dollar to chase these things that seem to me, whether they're political or whatever, they just shouldn't be part of what their duties are.
Is there, is there a statutory fee associated with that?
There's not.
Or is that just what?
No, we just, I think the city of B-DiS may have recommended that, or they're certainly willing to agree to it.
I think we figured the amount of time it takes to take care of one of those is what we came up with.
Yeah, I'm guessing it was reasonably related to what it takes.
Is that a fee paid by the city, or is it a fee paid by the individuals?
It's to be paid by the city. I don't know how many we've done. It hadn't been a whole lot.
Sure.
But it's paid by the city, or it's to be paid by the city.
Okay.
And I heard you say earlier that they were, that the Environmental Department was trying to pursue help for the city of Iola. It was, they were trying to.
Individuals.
Do, help to the people who needed sewer repair done through the funds that they can get through the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is called?
Post Oak RCND. And it was.
Cat, I'm sorry, could I, could I get you to come up to the podium, so we can get you on the microphone?
There was funding that was available through the Post Oak.
Right.
But they have since run out of funding, so she was trying to help the citizens up there.
On an individual basis, it wouldn't help like the city as an entity, but it would help the individuals. And when I was notified, Post Oak RCND funds were not available at this time, I did a little bit more research and found a possible grant opportunity for one of the individuals that we're working with within the city that had a complaint through USDA.
I appreciate that clarification.
Because we were, we were working with two individual residences to begin with, and that was for private individuals. But then these other, I think it was six anonymous complaints came in, which threw a red flag up for TCQ. So that's pretty much why we're here talking about this interlocal today.
And does anybody know, and I'm going to guess that Cat knows, because I think she and I had this conversation, but I slept since then, the Water Development Board no longer has grants available for wastewater treatment plant?
I have.
Hard to say.
It's hard to say.
Okay.
I think they, I think that, I want to say that the city of Iola did research that.
Really researched.
And they were on, we had a meeting prior to these complaints coming in because we had an email from TCQ saying that we could possibly start getting complaints. And Commissioner Mallett, the judge, city officials, and a representative for TCQ were in a meeting with a representative from the water board. They were on the phone during that meeting.
Cat, do you know if they've talked to Grant Works or anybody else about pursuing dollars for wastewater treatment plant?
They are using, I believe, they are going through a private engineering company.
But not, not.
To handle their grant, they're handling their grants and everything.
Right, okay. I understand. And I'm not suggesting that they haven't been pursuing that, it's just when the conflict arises and we're left looking at, what's the ultimate solution here? The ultimate solution is a wastewater treatment plant.
And I'd like to say once again, the announcement I made earlier was with the USDA coming for repairs for people who are over 62, but you had to be a homeowner, and I think these were not.
Well, the individual that I was trying to help, she is a homeowner, and she does meet the age requirement.
So for today, the issue is the interlocal and whether or not to make any changes to it or to terminate it. And I'm not necessarily appearing as a proponent for either one of those, just suggesting that it's time the court take a look at it, given the circumstance we find ourselves in at this moment.
I would suggest, Mr. Foltz, if you would, is to rewrite an interlocal agreement with, between Grimes County and the city of Iola that's similar or same as the one we currently have with B-DiS in regards to this issue. And once that is completed, then we can put that back on the agenda to review before the court.
I do have a question, though. Where does, where does that put us on the complaints that are already with that? I mean, those have already been, you've got about six of them that have already been turned in.
Do the six include the original two complaints, or are the six in addition to the two complaints? Do we have eight or six?
We have six, six.
We have six, okay.
And I will say, speaking as Laelie's son for the department, they are feeling overwhelmed with them. And then, once you brought in the matter of, "Are you generating these complaints?", they're a little uncomfortable with the position that they've been put in as being accused of generating complaints. And we've been there to try to help, not, not to, you know, because under this agreement, we are the designated representatives with TCEQ, but TCEQ can also do TCEQ's work and not be under a DR. It doesn't have to come through a DR. It can go strictly to TCEQ and remove Grimes County from, in harm's way. So with that being said, I don't know what your suggestion would be as far as any liabilities to the county in terms of all the complaints that are coming in, and now the accusation of generating them.
Well, I will tell you that I think we have enough immunity that I'm not really worried about any financial exposure, but I am worried about our people.
Yes.
And I don't want our people treated poorly or.
Agreed.
Inappropriately. And so if that's the case, then if I'm sitting in your shoes, it's pretty easy for me to say, maybe there needs to be more incentive to get this wastewater treatment plant done if we have time or if there has developed a concern that we're not performing adequately and our folks are taking a beating for it.
They are. They, they feel like they are, and I'm speaking for them, but they've also been contact, our representatives, both representatives and Senator, has been contacted about this issue. And now TCEQ has a higher-up that's handling this over in Austin, so it's filtered all the way over to Austin. And so they are a little apprehensive to go in and do any more complaints because of now the position of it's all the way over into Austin, and, you know, it's been moved up to the higher-ups at TCEQ also.
Yeah, no, I understand. And there remains additional step that you all could take, and that is have a conversation with the city. And so either have the city folks here, or you all go to a meeting of theirs and discuss what's going on.
I was really hoping that the city was going to be here, since they've already met with the judge and our commissioner, because, you know, we would like to hear from them, but at the same time, we know that funding, this is a big obligation on the city as far as trying to get a site up and running. It's a big number, and it's overwhelming to them, the number that they would have to match to the grant. I think y'all met with them on the matter.
Well, it depends which grants, but I mean, essentially to build the facility.
Yes.
The facilities and the infrastructures, probably in the $10 million range.
Okay. And that's a, that's a humongous number for a small area.
There's different grants, there's different interest-free loans and stuff like that, but they're trying to pursue any funding they can get.
So with that being said, I want to say there's a difference, when we talk about going back and rewriting the interlocal, there's a difference. B-DiS has a sewer site plant.
Right.
Iola still doesn't have a sewer site plant, so you're going to get complaints, you know, because that's where they are, unless citizens put in their own, on-site facility, you're going to have those complaints generated. And I think it's probably time for TCEQ to handle the matter.
It may be, and another alternative would be the city could obtain their own DR.
Okay.
That would cost far less than $10 million, I suspect, but it would be more a burden than I think that they're prepared to pay at this moment, but there is some middle ground.
Commissioner, it's your precinct. Do you have any recommendations or thoughts on how you'd like us to pursue this?
Well, I think we could probably, this, this facility, this agreement, if, if the city of Iola is not happy with what we're doing, I think we should, we could enter into it, the interlocal agreement similar to the one we have, or the same as the one we have in B-DiS, if they want to, you know, initiate any help or any, initiate us as a DR for certain complaints, that we could pursue that. But as far as, you know, you know, this old one seems to be out of date if the city of Iola is not really happy with what we're doing. I haven't had a chance to speak with the mayor about the problems she's having apparently with, with us, but.
Shall we put this back on the agenda for next week and give you time to visit with the mayor and invite her here?
Yes, I can do that, and we can discuss what's going on with that.
May I ask, have you seen the communication from the mayor?
Yes. But I, you know, in reading that, what, you know, her intent was or what it was, and I wanted to speak with her on that and see what, if she just wanted clarification, or if she just didn't understand what was said in the original correspondence, or.
Would it, would it, court, would it be better to have that as an agenda item next week, or hold a special workshop immediately after Commissioner's Court? Is there a?
Whichever way you'd like to do it.
We'll just leave it as an agenda item. Would you make sure we get it on the agenda for next week? Commissioner Mallett, we'll put the burden on you to contact the mayor, and if she can't make it, if she can send a designated representative that can speak on the behalf of Iola, that would be interesting.
Sure, sure.
All right. Ms. Cat, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we're going to then table that for now. Should put it on the agenda for next week. I would like to get a, do you recall, Cherie, when you put the interlocal book together for me, if you saw the B-DiS interlocal agreement?
I don't remember. I saw an audit agreement.
I know.
I didn't find it.
Let's double-check that, and if we don't have a copy of that in there, let's make sure we get one for review.
Mr. Lee, did you find it yesterday when I?
Yes, I emailed it to you yesterday afternoon.
Okay, I can email it to you. I asked her to find that B-DiS one yesterday.
Okay. If you, if you can get it to Cherie, then she can make distribution as an attachment for everybody, if you don't mind.
If you forward it to.
We'll do that. Thank you. Okay. With that, we are now going to move to agenda item number nine, the enlightening Roden Bridge report. Our engineer, Harry Walker. Glad you're back in the county and not in Austin.
Myself.
I can say the same for me.
Interesting experience.
It is, was.
I'll give you a brief that.
Well, we need number nine, right?
Number nine. Is that right? Yeah?
Yes. Item nine is a water line permit application from Woodson Creek SUD for installation on County Road 110. You've seen other applications from them in the same area. They have a plant there, and they're doing some work to renovate some of the lines running around the plant as a continuation of that. This is a six-inch line. It's actually a low pressure line. It's my understanding they have an off-site well that they're sending untreated water to the plant to be treated. Wouldn't be appropriate for a fire danger. It runs on about three tenths of a mile on County Road 110, just west of FM 39 in the same vicinity where it proved rather damage recently. I would recommend.
I move to approve a water line permit for Woodson Creek SUD on County Road 110.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Walker, your Roden Bridge report, please, sir.
The crews are busy. We're putting a lot of rock out right now. We have also spent quite a bit of time cleaning up downed trees after a couple of recent storms. We had, almost looked like a small tornado had gone across the eastern side of the county. There were sort of a line of trees down through that area. But, no, and actually, I saw a few groups torn up the rocks and, to make cultural use of the two, so we may have come closer to having a real problem than we realized. We've also been doing some small projects for the town of Anderson, an interlocal with them. We've installed guard rails on Cedar Street and Fan Thorpe, and a couple of places where they're concerned about the drop-off into some of the gullies and ditches. We did also start a project on the County Turf Park Lot back here, and we'll get that finished up in the next few weekends. Ditch Crew's been busy primarily on County Road 211, been having to put in some major ditches along there, basically creating ditches, large ditches where there were only small ditches in the past. The site ditcher, the hurricane ditcher, has been working in, had been doing well, and now it's back in the shop, so we've got some good production out of it for a few weeks, and now we're going to make some more repairs and hopefully get it back up and running again here shortly.
Are we waiting on that for like 417?
That would be what we'd use on 417, yeah. That would be the equipment. That piece of equipment is designed for doing ricefield ditching, so we're giving it a pretty severe duty doing these roads with rocky soils and things, so we're just going to have to expect higher maintenance issues with that, that probably with the manufacturer that would have been anticipated. It does good work, and when we keep it running, we've had some issues with it. Elsewhere, as the judge alluded to, I did go to Austin twice this last couple of weeks to testify on both the high-speed rail and the big threshold limits issue for Roden Bridge. It was an interesting experience. The way they do their work is kind of an enigma to me, but it was interesting and hopefully productive. Continuing to work with the pipeline companies, we also have several oil drilling operations active in the county right now, and continuing to work with them. I was called yesterday. Magnolia Oil is going to approach us for temporary, temporary water line permit for their well on 190, they're going to do a fracking job. And they are asking us to make some modifications to the permit application that we recently developed for those lines, so that'll be coming back to you in the next week or two for some consideration.
Can you expand or expound on how many wells are being drilled at present?
There are three active right now.
Okay.
Well, three that we have permits on right now. Magnolia, Juno, and Apache. Apache started well on 126. Magnolia has moved their rig in on 190. Juno has, has had a permit application, and they delayed the start of that project later this summer. We talked about it last time, their permit expired, and they're going to wait to renew it when they get a little bit closer to starting. And two of the three wells are fracking projects, which we have not seen in a while till that start to come back. Recently, previously, we're seeing more of the directional drilling in the deeper wells.
Right.
These are shallow, cracked wells, a little bit of change in the dynamics of the industry right now. Any questions? Any other questions?
And we did get, the court, in my opinion, did approve your overtime hours?
Yes, that's. Yes, that's-
When are you-
Planned to start this weekend.
Okay.
We're getting folks lined up as we speak, you know, start Friday and Saturday.
Were your team's pretty receptive to that?
Yeah, a little bit of complaints about people had plans already made and have a lot of notice, although we've been talking about it for several weeks. But there, there's always going to be a little bit of discussion when you're starting a new program, so I'm not overly concerned about that, I think we'll be fine.
For the most of this, this is volunteer overtime versus scheduled overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if that doesn't work out, if we can't get people, enough people volunteering consistently, we'll make, turn it into scheduled overtime, but as long as possible, I want to keep it as a volunteer operation.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We'll go to agenda item number ten. Consider and accept resignation of Gail Sal, mayor of city of Anderson, effective May nine, twenty nineteen, and consider the city of Plantersville mayor Karen Hale as a replacement. To minimize the excitement or the nervousness of seeing this on the agenda, this is from the B V, B V cog representation. Mayor Sal is a member of the B V cog representation for Grimes County, and she advised me, since she wasn't running for mayor, then we ought to seek a replacement. I called, I talked to Mayor Sal, I then talked to Karen Hale, who's mayor of Plantersville, and her being the newest mayor, thought that might be an opportunity for her to see how the cog operates. So anyway, consider and accept the resignation of Gail Sal, mayor of Anderson, and consider the city of Plantersville mayor Karen Hale as a replacement.
We, we say as a replacement, but I think it should have been worded as a replacement on the B V cog board of directors. So it's kind of incomplete, you know, and so you said the same thing, but you didn't add that.
Okay, if I say as a replacement to the B V cog board, replacement to the B V cog board, would that be acceptable?
On the B V cog board of directors. And from my understanding, we can have as many representatives as, but we only get one vote?
Right. So that would be my motion to accept the resignation of Mayor Gail Sal and have the replacement for the B V cog board of directors, the mayor of Plantersville, Karen Hale.
Second.
There's a motion before the court by Judge Fowles, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven, share information regarding Secretary of Disaster Regulation S four four seven six C number thirteen. And I just wanted, kind of like Commissioner, you were talking about, the USDA is, is doing work for citizens because we did have a disaster declaration, S four four six seventy-six, that was initiated by the United States Department of Agriculture. On March eleventh, twenty nineteen, the secretary of agriculture designated thirteen counties as primary natural disaster areas. This action is based on damages and losses caused by excessive moisture and flooding occurring September three, twenty eighteen through January twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. The primary counties, there are a number of them listed, but Grimes County is one of those primary counties. So by having this designation, this designation makes farm operators in both primary and contiguous counties eligible to be considered for low-interest emergency loans from the Farm Service Agency, F S A, provided eligibility requirements have met, and F S A will consider each loan application on its own merits, taking into account the extent of losses, security available and repayment ability. So this is just another avenue for citizens who have been harmed by the excessive rain and moisture, for them to seek monies to help them get back on their feet. So I wanted to have that as a matter of record since it was sent to us.
And, and it said that loans would be accepted through November twelfth, two thousand nineteen?
I didn't say that, but yes, I mean, they've got a period of time between now and November to get their applications in, so. But I just wanted there to be an official awareness within the county for the citizens that this was available to them.
Thank you.
Well, it's unfortunate that we have to have a declaration like this, but it's certainly a fortunate situation that we are at least allowing some relief to our agricultural communities.
Good.
I do have a question about it with regard to public announcements. It indicates that a special emphasis will be placed on informing the farm community through public announcements and arranging and conducting meetings with the local agricultural vendors and leaders. Is that supposed to be coordinated through us or will the USDA?
I didn't get any guidance on that. So I can't intelligently answer that question.
Well, I think-
We could advise the Farm Bureau, we could advise Texas Southwest Cattlemen's Association and let them know, they could possibly put it in their newsletters and publications.
I'll, I'll speak with the extension agent-
Great.
-to him now.
All right.
If this is approved, then he's got some pretty good contacts, he distributes it.
Okay, you'll take care of that then?
Yes, sir.
Very good. It's just a sharing of information instead of information. But if we don't get it to the right people, it doesn't do any good to share it, so they don't know anything about it.
Absolutely.
All right. We'll go to agenda item number twelve, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize county judge's signatory. We've had some pretty substantial raining, winds, but everything's pretty green and we're supposed to get rain today, tonight, tomorrow, so I would propose no action. Any comments? We'll take no action on agenda item number twelve. Are there any updates, agenda item thirteen, are there any updates on the strategic plan? Hearing none. Move to agenda item number fourteen, is there a motion?
Number seven.
Number seven. Number who? Number seven. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Audience participation is usually welcome. Going back to agenda item number seven, consider and approve the contract for reverse nine-one-one on services with hyperreaching authorized county judge's signatory. Commissioner Cox, did you have an opportunity to-
I have had an opportunity.
-review the contract to satisfaction?
I appreciate the court allowing me time to view that. I do have a couple of questions. There's notes, I'm assuming they're your notes.
I think you read my notes and the blue, is there response something to that effect?
Okay. And so there's a couple of things on there that onsite training and purchase of public data that are optional, but I don't know if those are included in the package price.
They're, we do not purchase public data. Some counties don't have a, a me, and so I'm able to go and gather our, all of our T, our telephone number data for free.
Okay. And then on the automated weather alert, which is included in the package, it, it says based on community signup, does that, what does that mean? I mean, how many, do we have a, a number that, a threshold that they have to sign up before they do the weather alerts or is it just one per-
No, that, I received a question, questionnaire from them Monday, and what they were asking is which weather alerts we wanted, our, we wanted our community to get. Would that be hurricane, flooding, severe weather, tornado?
Okay, thank you.
And Judge, based upon their responses, which I assume somebody's going to draft a new clean version because that's just with Redline.
Right.
But assuming that the annual renewal comes out and assuming that Grimes County is the, gets to choose the venue of any suit, I'm satisfied about the concerns that I had. The rest of it were notes that I was trying to make for Cat to be sure that everybody was considering what obligations we had and where there were places that appeared to lack clarity. But having said that, the secondary issue that I was addressing was whether the existing contract was going to expire, could we get out of it? It appears that it is a three-year flat contract and it expires, one would assume, the quote was originally April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, but the document's signed by Judge Lamont on May the second, so I'm going to guess that it expires on May the second.
Of this year.
Of this year. It's a three-year contract starting in two thousand sixteen.
How'd you luck that one slip by?
I'm sure that I advised them it's a three-year contract. It is always your decision, court, as to whether you and you entered the agreement.
Gotcha. So that being said, is there a motion?
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
The, the term that I'm looking at on your copy says it's for a one-year with a thirty-day prior termination.
Yeah, 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 you're on the current one. I was talking about, I want to be sure before we enter the current one, that we're out of the old one.
I got you.
The old one's got a three-year flat, but that one says one year with an automatic renewal unless you give thirty days' notice. That's what I'm asking them to remove, and they've indicated they will remove that. So any motion to approve the agreement would be on the condition that the changes that they suggested that they will make will be made.
And Cat, I'll ask one other question. I know we had this discussion at the conference with the lady, but, and with you, a little bit after the fact. But once we terminate one provider and we go to the next provider, approximately how long are we down without that communication?
It's going to be at the most three weeks.
Okay.
We have to get, because we have to get a blessing from T, from B V cog to use this company, but because a county in our cog already uses this company-
Should not be a problem.
It's not going to be a problem.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I just didn't want the court to be surprised or commissioners.
I'll make the motion if there are no further questions to approve the contract for reverse nine-one-one services with hyperreach and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Stipulating the changes.
Stipulating changes, ma'am.
Stipulating changes, ma'am.
Second.
They keep us honest, don't they? Okay. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Let me get there, let me get there. Agenda item number fourteen, I have a motion from Commissioner Mallett and a second by Commissioner Walker to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.